Looks like we're going, good morning everybody, day 6 of 28 in a row. Uh, so today's agenda, we're just gonna jump right into it cuz I think uh, I got a uh, a jam-packed day here. Um, actually, real quick, once again, let me see if I can't share, once my stream comes live, share something on Twitter real quick. Tweet this puppy, good. Twitter's out there. Facebook. Um, so anyway, today's day 6, where we're gonna start with, uh, just like we did before, start with some uh, hand reading practice, right here. Whoops, got my own voice on there, cool. Alrighty, so we're gonna start with some hand reading practice, just one hand, we're gonna just take a look, see if we can't range our opponent through the streets. Next up, um, we'll look at lessons learned from building the range they called you with, a video from Split Suit that I watched, uh, and took note on. And I told you guys about yesterday. And then we'll do some adjusting two-bet calling ranges within Flopzilla. And I think that is where we're gonna spend the meat of this session, right here. Because I wanna get these preset calling ranges, these call-two-bet ranges, I wanna get them more to where, um, and they're pretty darn close to where I want already. These are ranges that I got from Split Suit's Hand Reading Lab. And you know, they're pretty darn accurate, but I might wanna make a few changes, like maybe get rid of that and, you know, add a hand like that, who knows? I mean, we'll, we'll go through these and look to see, uh, what, what I wanna add, what adjustments I want to make. So, let's get to our hand reading practice, right here. So, oh, before I do that, yesterday I played, um, my study stream at night, my, my play stream at night. It had, um, I was gonna do ACR, but ACR was on the fritz and there was issues and stuff. And so I jumped back over to my old site, Carbon, because I wanted to, just wanted to play and wanted to put something up on Twitch. And if we look at Wacky Wan, which is my Carbon screen name, uh, in 300 hands, I won $15 at 25 NL, which was good. Let's take a look at any random table here, or random hand. At this ta- at one of, at one of the two tables I was on yesterday, it was full of loose passive fish. This one wasn't so much, one loose passive fish, right here. Uh, let's just find another random hand. Okay, PM, yep. Hmm, this isn't showing it, so I guess I should've went through and found it, but ahead of time. But at two of my tables, it was a bummer, I had, well, this guy's a pretty loose passive fish. Um, but I had 1, 2, 3, 4 fish at my tables yesterday, on two different 25 NL tables at Carbon. It was great, a long time ago I moved to ACR, um, because, because I wanted more action. On Carbon, you'll only find 2 or 3 tables open at any one time, at any different stake. 10 NL, there's, there's a few more 10 N Ls. But at 25 NL, you might have 1 full ring running and then like 2 or 3 6 maxes, you know? Just not a lot of action, so I left, went to ACR. I went back yesterday, the first time in like, I don't know, 6 months trying it out. And, um, and it was full of fish, it was so good, so I might be playing there more often, you might see that. We're gonna continue using, I'm gonna continue playing on ACR, continue using Frisky Misky for a lot of these, um, go to the Twitch stream here. Can you, continue using Frisky Misky for a lot of, or for all of my stats recording. Unless I just happen to end up playing on Carbon so much, I might change my stats recording to that, right there. Um, but for now, we're still, we'll stick with Frisky Misky. Uh, so let's take a look, let's find a good showdown hand here. And we'll look for one with some decent action, uh, on the, because I think here, yesterday we did, um, yesterday we did pocket queens, there wasn't much action. This 8-6, I don't think in the cutoff, there was any action. Uh, bet, check, check, bet, check, 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 check fold, yeah. No action here, in the cutoff, let's see the MP. Only one hand where I lost in the MP. Hand that went to showdown. All my other hands are winning hands at showdown, wow. How interesting, so Jack 10, let's see. Bet, bet, check. Let's check, let's take a look at this one. Alright, so we are dealt Jack 10, I imagine I open it, I might even end up, uh, what do you call it? I might end up isolating his limp or something, who knows? Nope, fold, I opened it, great, so we're gonna deal with a calling ranges, which is exactly what we're studying right now. Okay, cool, heads up, Chuck Nat, so you can see Chuck Nat, oh, I know Chuck Nat. This guy is a, you can see he's colored in orange, he has a donk, he plays way too many hands, he comes in for small raises when he's, uh, he makes tiny bluffs, I guess I should say. Uh, and then he also can bet big when he has a value hand. Let's see what notes I have on the guy. Uh, MP, men open, and then call in position with 4 deuce off, that's right. Uh, men open, call with 4 deuce off, so, uh, versus a 3-bet. Another hand, fold, or a flop, ace XX, donk lead after calling pre. Okay, he just donk leads on the ace XX, I don't know what that means yet, but I put that note there. Ace King offsuit, pre, get it in, 45 big blinds. He's willing to get it in with ace King offsuit, pre-flop, uh, with just a short stack, you know? Roughly 45, you know, might even be this hand, just like this, right here, where he has 45 big blinds. So, comes in ace King 10. So first, before we get here, what does he call me with? Well, this guy has such a big gap between that, he's calling easily with that, every single ace. He opened, he opened and then called with a deuce 4 offsuit. So let's give this guy, something crazy big here. Is he, I think he's calling ace Jack. He's probably calling nines and tens, but maybe 3 betting jacks, maybe calling king queen. Let's give him this, let's give him such a super wide range. 3-bet's 27%, actually, let's go and take that off. Yeah, let's just go that, give him a little bit wider of a 3 betting range. You can see I only have 45 hands on the guy. He is super active though, so I don't wanna narrow the range, or I don't want to, I don't want the range, his 3 betting range to be too wide, uh, because he just, he does like to just see flops, so. Um, we shall see, oh, I have the Jack 10 of clubs. Right, right, clubs. Okay, so so far, against this super wide range, we actually have, we don't even have a pair, we only have Jack high, but we actually have 52% equity against this range. Because he's, his range is full of crap, there's so many hands that we beat currently in all of his pocket pairs, if we just hit a pair, if the board comes too high car, or too high pairs, you know, a pair of queens, a pair of kings on the board, our Jack is gonna play. So, we have so many hands that, um, that we currently beat him with right now, which is great, 53% not even have a pair and Jack high. That's one of the good things about playing against players who call to Y, is that you're gonna get to the flop with such a superior hand, uh, with most of the hands that you get there with. Ace King 5, Diamond Heart, Spade. Alright, so on this flop now, we flop the gutter. But he does have a lot of aces and a lot of kings in his range, and all of those pocket pairs still have us beat. Uh, and then so, of course, his, uh, the equity's foot flop here, he's at 60% to us 40. But that's not the worst thing in the world, because we are in position, we have the gut shot, and he doesn't have to have a good hand in this instance, for sure. So let's see, he decides to check right there. He in general likes to C-bet a lot, and he doesn't like to fold to 3-bets. So that, or doesn't like to fold to C-bets. So this tells me he is not flop honest. If I bet right here, he is more than, more likely than not to call, just to see the next card, unless he has absolutely nothing. And so I decide to bet, which I'm good with, right there. Um, I raised pre-flop, he just called, he could easily put me on an ace or a king, if he just has like, you know, 6/8 offsuit, which is in his range, if he has 10/8 offsuit, if he has a Queen 7 suited, but they're, uh, clubs instead of any of these. He, he has a plenty, there are plenty of hands that he can fold to this bet. But he decides to call, so what does he call with here? What's his stack, $10? I think he can wait a little bit and try to get aggressive on the next street with any sets. So I think sets earn his check calling range. Um, he could've donk led him, of course, he could check raise with him, but he checked called and I think it's possible for him to do, and the only set he has is a set of 5s anyway. Uh, but I, I think it's doable. His 2 pair, um, what's ace 5 and king 5, I guess, or is only 2 pairs, right? Where's that at? Yeah, ace 5 offsuit as well. Um, his top pair hands, plenty of aces, he's check calling with, right there. Middle pairs, he's check calling with all those kings, guaranteed weaker pairs? With all of these pairs, I'm gonna say he's gonna call. Because the guy is so donkish, so fishy, he wants to see a flop, or he wants to see a turn. If he has any pair, he's gonna try to turn trips or turn a 2 pair. So for sure, he's staying in, uh, with any of those. No made hands, we're gonna say most of those are gonna fold, right there. Uh, unless they're a part of these other draws and stuff. Gut shots, he's staying in, 2-card backdoor draw, he's staying in 1 street. So we've only been able to narrow him with this bet. Uh, if we would've checked, he'd have his full range ahead of him right now. But because we decided to bet, we are able to take away 26% of his hands. You can see now he's at 74% of his original range. That's at the tab, so we can look at the tab, uh, at the combos, 409 hands, continue, uh, beyond the flop here. So, by betting, um, we've actually ended up narrowing his range, but now his narrow, more, his narrowed range has, uh, better equity than us. He's at 70, we're at 30%. So, let's see what happens, poor hearts, should not help him, doesn't help us either, obviously. Equity, now even worse, let's see what that was? From 29 down to 19%, so we have almost no chance of winning this hand at all. Um, the only way of winning, of course, is hitting our gutter, or of, uh, just betting and getting him to fold. So let's see what happens. He checks? Bet, good, so $2, I upped the bet. Um, the first bet, let's see what was it as a percentage? 100 divided by 175, I bet 57% pot. So I probably hit the 2/3s pot button, and then scrolled down to just a dollar, or maybe I just went up to 4 bucks, exactly. That feels like, because it's really close to 50%, really close to a half pot, it feels like a pretty darn weak bet, it feels like I don't like my hand, I'm not trying to get value. So I'm not a big fan of that bet, right there. He called, uh, the next one was 2 into 3, 75. 53, roughly the same thing, 53% of the pot. Um, I just, instead of a buck, I bet 2 bucks, upping the bet just a tiny bit. Um, let's see what he does, whoops, weren't supposed to see that. He calls, right there. And then, uh, we get another ace on the board, so what does he? What does he check call us with? And we can already see, I never even put that hand in his calling range in the first place, so we can get him wider next time, but, um, uh, check calls, that's right.
It's a little early, it's only 5:30, can you go lay down for another 30 minutes? Okay, you can stay up here, take my blanket.
You're welcome. Okay, so, um, he checked called us, what does he check call us with, right there? Well, um, I think he would wake up with sets now trying to get value out of us. I don't think he checked called with any sets. His 2 pairs, I think he's also trying to get value now, you're getting, this is the turn, he needs to start putting in more money to make more money off of us with his 2 pairs, he's not doing it. Now, with the top pairs, I can see a lot of top pairs doing it. We raised pre-flop, we easily have an ace, king, ace, queen, ace, jack in our range. If he doesn't have one of those, he is possibly just check calling, uh, on this street again. And then maybe betting, donk leading the, the river, if not, um, i- i- if, uh, if that's all he does. Because he wants value, he doesn't want us to check behind if he has top pair. Uh, so I think that's what would happen, top pairs, check calling. Middle pairs, I think check calling, not believing we have an ace. Those weak pairs, now we bet 2 streets in a row, all these weak pairs. We could definitely remove these. Now that is a crappy, that's a crappy 5. Let's keep these, 7 4s, um, he doesn't have any kind of draw unless it's a flush draw, so let's just remove these from the weak pair, but they're still within the flush draw combos here. But all these slightly higher 5s will keep them in, remove the lower 5s. All of these, uh, third pocket pairs, possibly staying in if he continues to not believe. So let's just remove some of the hands there. No made hands are removed, uh, flush draw's keeping in, no flush draw, no open ender. And let's keep in the gut shots, because he's a super loose player, wants to try to hit, wants to try to stack us, takes his chances, let's keep those in as well. So now it looks like we, uh, from 535 combos originally, he's down to 250. So we've taken about half of his range away, which is a good, which is good. And then the ace on the river, he checks, and then we check, so. Let's just try to figure this out, what is his checking range? He, he probably wouldn't want us to, uh, he's, let's see. His checking range, I would say top pairs, possibly. Actually, no, we don't even need to do this, well, actually, we should, checking range, because now, we have a chance to, to lead out here. Let's see what he does check with, and to see if we can get him to fold often enough, right? Um, of course, all of these are gonna check, right here. Uh, let's see, no made hand is checking, his weak pairs are checking, uh, his middle pairs. Oops, I didn't even put it in. Uh, ace of clubs. Ace of clubs, right there, so what is he checking? His full house, he is not checking, he wants to get value, straight, no 3 of a kind, he's not checking either. His middle pairs are checking, checking, checking. So out of the 258 combos that he got to the, uh, river with? Let's see here now, let's not do that. So, right here, these are the total combos that he has in his range, 336, all the hands that, that make these up, right? So, 336 is the total combos. We have the hands that he is checking, 100 checking and check folding. Uh, mid pair, weak pair, so 117, 117 plus, whoops, 0, okay. 117 plus 60, plus 81. So he is checking and then possibly check folding 258 combos. 258 divided by 336 is 77% of the time. So I estimate that he is check folding 77% of the time. If we triple barrel, is he really gonna call with mid pair, weak pair, or of course, the no made hand? He got to the river with, uh, 336 combos, right here, um. Oh, because I checked some of this stuff, once, I apologize, let me get back to this here. So, what does he check calling, top pair, mid pair, weak pair, he's not check calling, no made hand. He's check calling his flush draw on the turn, no flush draw, open and go. Okay, so there's the 250, so now we're accurate. He is check calling the turn at 250. I apologize, I started clicking these stats things ahead of time before I put the ace of clubs in. He gets to the river with 250 hands, the river hits ace of clubs. So he has, well, now that the ace of clubs, it removes some combos, he got to the river with 220 hand, 220 combos. He is check folding these, right here. So he's check folding 99 combos, plus 3, plus 57. He's check folding 159 combos. 159 divided by 220 is 72% of the time. So he's check folding 72% of the time, and that's pretty darn good. All we have to do is make, you know, uh, a 2/3s pop bet, a 3/4 pop bet, something that looks scary to him, that he's not willing to call with the middle pairs. So that's what we should do in this instance, we should throw out a bet to get him to fold. Um, but instead, as you can see, what is it? He checks, I check behind, I should've thrown out the bet, I should've repped 1 more street with that ace, right there. That was a perfect card for me to come, uh, in my head, I don't know what I was thinking, I was probably thinking like, oh crap, he has an ace, he has trips now, he's just lowplaying me, because, uh, he just wants to get it in, he'll, he'll check raise me on anything. I should've realized that if he had a good hand, he wouldn't want me to check behind, he would be betting, right here. So I screwed the pooch by not bluffing this hand. And he shows up with a Jack 5, which is understandable. Um, he paired on the flop, he flushed drew on the river, or drew, you know, hit a flush draw on the river, and then, uh, on the turn, on the river, he absolutely whiffed it, which means that he's, uh, just not gonna bet, of course. And who knows if he would've checked called, he probably would've check folded on that river, to a 2/3s pop bet, so I should've made that, I screwed that one up. And Jack 5 suited is not in the range we originally signed him, it was just outside of it. So let's clear, uh, let's clear all of this stuff. So if we went, we gave him a 53% calling range, if we put Jack 5 in, he's definitely, he's probably calling all the suited queens. Can probably call this stuff, right here, um, maybe even some more of those. So he's calling like, near 60% of the time, I would say. Uh, so we can actually put that in here for future hands. About 60% of the time, blind call, uh, 2-bet calling. Great, so now we know for next time, give him a 60% range. This is the kind of player that we want to see a ton of flops with. And actually, the other day, when I was playing a session with this guy, I was purposely trying to get into hands with him and I was able to stack him. Um, he actually doubled up through me with his deuce 4 offsuit, when I had like, I don't remember what it was, pocket queens or something. Um, and he flopped trips with deuce 4 offsuit, you know, he called a 3-bet like that. Um, just a really weak player, but the kind of guy you want to play hands with. And I end up making my money back and then some from the guy, uh, just because of his terrible play. Yep, so, right there, Jack 10 suited, let's make a note of that, note of that in my notes. Once again, little failure, because we did not assign a, uh, a big enough pre-flop range, alright. So that's the deuce 5, right there. So yesterday, I watched the video, "Building the Range They Called You With", from Split Suit. Um, and it's a really good video, I'll send the link out to, I sent it out yesterday in the email, I'll send it out, I'll send it out again today. But, um, he talks about a lot of things in the, uh, in the video, and it's basically about, hey, what kind of considerations do you need to take into account when you're assigning somebody's pre-flop range, when they call you? Which is exactly what we're studying here, you know? Um, accurately assigning a pre-flop range makes it easier to range them through the streets. Your opponents have 3 different options, right? And as well as you do, with any hand that they play, they can fold, they can call, they can raise, same as you. So what are they folding? They're folding their crap hands, of course. What are they raising? They're raising their best hands, probably, or possibly some bluffs as well. What are they calling? They're calling with all the hands that are just below their 3-bet raising range, but are better than those crappy hands. They're calling with that middle range, right there. So, um, of course, yeah, they fold all the, all the crap. They call, uh, you, what you need to do is select the entire range you think they're playing versus your open. All the 3-bets and all the calls, and he gives an example like this. What you would do is start with like, let's say that in this spot, they're gonna play with us 15% of the time. Um, and this is their entire range. Well, what hands do we think that they're gonna 3-bet us with? Well, let's start removing some hands, we think they're 3-betting with these bad boys, right here. Well, that leaves a 12% calling range, or 162 combos in their calling range. All this other junk not highlighted, those are all their folding ranges, great. Um, so that's how you determine somebody's calling range, or that's, that's the steps that you wanna do, um, to determine what they're calling. Uh, and then their raise, of course, most players, this is something interesting he said, and I feel it's completely true, most players are binary players. They see pocket aces, they raise with them, they see 7 deuce offsuit, they fold it, you know? That's how most players, and all of your fish, that's how they are. They're not gonna be dealt Queen 5 suited in the big blind, they're not gonna call this time, and then 2, um, 2 orbits down the road, they fold the Queen 5 suited. No, they're gonna call it every single time. Most players, if they dealt, if they're dealt pocket aces, kings or queens, they 3-bet it, they 4-bet it every single time. Um, some players, what's it say? Some players can occasionally mix it up and play differently, like always calling with black aces, but all the other aces, they'll 3-bet with, you know? Some players do that to, to try to trick you, to try to balance their range, as they say. Um, and of course, there, another thing about 3-bet ranges, is that 3-bet ranges can include hands that are worse than their calling range. So oftentimes, um, and this is something I've heard espoused by a lot of people, you want your strong hands, of course, your value 3-bets, you, you want them, you want them in your range, you wanna have some value 3-betting hands, of course. But you should also have some bluffs to balance it out, so some bluffs that you could throw in. Actually, let's clear this, let's say that this is your 3-betting range for value. You're calling with all these other hands, right? But you wanna throw in some bluffs as well, so you're gonna throw in hands like this as your bluffs. Hands that are like, outside of your calling range, that are just outside of it. So you don't wanna call with them, for whatever reason, you don't wanna call. But you can throw it out as a bluff, because you've decided ahead of time that this particular hand, a Queen Jack suited, a King Jack suited, these are worth calling. You don't wanna 3-bet, cuz you don't wanna fold to a 4-bet, right? But you just wanna see that flop with a King Jack and a Queen Jack, because you feel that you can make money with those hands. Well, you don't wanna 3-bet them, because it's better to see the flop, by your estimation. But you can 3-bet the worst hands, right there, because if they 4-bet, you'll just fold. Hopefully, they will just fold, awarding you that original open raise along with the, uh, or along with the blinds. So you gotta be aware of that, when you're thinking about your opponent's 3-betting range, oftentimes, they do 3-bet like this for value, and they'll throw in the bluffs that are outside of their calling ranges. So that's something to consider. Uh, let's see here, you build your range as an average, then you modify it based on the actual opponent at the time. Take note of the hands that have, take note of hands they have that fall outside of the range you assigned. So, let's say, um, I have this opponent, and I think that he calls, let's give something a little bit meatier. I think that he's gonna call this range most of the time, or if not all the time, uh, when he's on the button and I open in the early position, for example. So he's calling this, right here. Um, what you do is modify it based on the opponent at the time. Hmm, I think my opponent's gonna call this, great, but what if I have a loose aggressive player? Um, or even just a slightly more passive player, actually, let's use that as an example. What if I have a slightly more passive player calling me? This is the range, you know, I think that this player's calling roughly 13% of the time, but this guy's really passive, you know? I can see him calling, uh, a few other additional aces as well. Uh, because he loves to play suited hands, he loves to hit the nut flush draw, or hit the nut flush and stack his opponent. And, um, you know, I can also see him calling with King 10, with all the suited broadways, right there. Great, add those to the range, just beef it up a little bit for the opponent. Let's say that, um, the same range, right here, let's say might, the particular opponent, he's a little bit more tight aggressive, he'll go for any set mining, so we can keep all of these pairs in. But he's not gonna play with these so much, because, um, they're just not that good of suited connectors. And then plus, he definitely doesn't like the offsuit aces, I hardly ever see him play those. Let's take those out of his range, right there. So bam, we're gonna take it from that 13% down to that 9.35%. This is often how I do my ranges, occasionally, I'll start at an 8% range, and then I'll beef stuff up. To get to, you know, what I think his, uh, his calling range might be. But for the most part, I start with the bigger range and narrow it down to, to match what I think my opponent does. And so you got, you got 2 different avenues there, beef up a smaller range or narrow down a wider range. Alright, calling ranges can expand based on position, stack depth, possible skill edge, and other factors. So your best players, your players that are really paying attention, maybe against other tight aggressive players, maybe they do only call 13%. But let's say that donk lag that we just saw, Chuck Nat, let's say he raised pre-flop. Well, you know, when a, when a good player's on the button, he's gonna call with a much wider range. Let me show you what I did, so, the other day Chuck Nat, I was playing against him, that guy that we just did the hand reading, hand reading with, or whatever. So he opened in an early position, and I was on the button. My normal button range for calling would be something along this, probably take away these 2, would be roughly, my normal button calling range is roughly that, kinda like that same first range that I showed earlier. Depending on the opponent, it might be all these aces too, or I might just remove those. Uh, it, it's, it's gonna look something like this, but against Chuck Nat, I literally was calling, oh, I was 3-betting a whole lot too, so let's give this 26% range. Um, I would be calling there against him, I'd be 3-betting these hands, 3-bet the eights. No, I would be calling the eights, 3-bet the nines. I would probably be calling these against him as well. I called all my suited kings, I think in one hand I did call a King 5 or King 4 suited, just to play against Chuck Nat, right there. Um, I don't think I would call that low against him. I want a decent range versus his super wide opening range, you know? Um, so I would probably call something right around here against him. And so I'm adjusting my calling range, based on the opponent who opened the pot. Um, and so most good opponents do this as well. A lot of your weaker fish, they don't adjust, they only look at their 2 cards and say, hey, this is worth calling, I'm gonna call. 5/6 suited, great, I'm gonna call, it doesn't matter who opened, it doesn't matter how many limps,[1700.22] Five, six suited, great, I'm going to call. It doesn't matter who opened, it doesn't matter how many limbs and then somebody isolated, they're still going to call just based on their cards. So that's something to keep in mind. Your different opponents will change their ranges based on, uh, on, on these factors. Whereas it, position stacked up, skill F, skill edge and other factors. By other factors, I'm talking about like image, like, let's say I open and another tag tight aggressive player opens, he might call differently versus me than he would against this other tag, just based on history. Uh, let's see here. Good players, da, 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 yep, yep, yep. And run your hand reading as per usual in Flopzilla and narrow their range as the streets progress. And make sure you take notes on any hands that fall outside of that original opening range that you assigned. Uh, to help you better range them and others like them in the future. So we just saw on that other hand, um, guess I got the hand still here. There we go. So Chuck Nat, we saw at the end, he had Jack five suited in this hand. So he's able to call out of the blinds with Jack five suited. Um, just putting himself in a terrible spot, uh, calling with 50% of hands. Out of position against a player, he doesn't know. Okay, I guarantee with stats like this, he doesn't use a HUD, he doesn't pay attention to player types and characteristics. He probably doesn't think about that stuff at all. He just looks at his hand and he thinks, great, it's suited. I can flop a flush, I can hit a flush draw and flush and, you know, double my stack through this guy. Um, or frisky, misty through this gal is what he's thinking. So, um, you know, that's, that's, that's his motivation behind calling. Now, when I encounter other players like him, knowing what he, knowing how he views calling and the hands that he calls with will inform me on my hand reading on other opponents just like him in the future. So I'll possibly be putting Jack five into every donk's calling range from now on, you know, Jack five suited at least. Yep, yep. So that is that right there. So it was a really good video. I totally recommend that you read it. He doesn't fully go through a hand reading exercise. It's just about assigning a pre-flop calling range, which is the first step in a, uh, in, in doing any kind of hand reading off the felt or on the felt. So I really recommend that video. So, um, let's get to some Flopzilla work, adjusting two bet calling ranges in Flopzilla. So like I said, these are the ranges that I'm currently working with and I got these from Split Suit's hand reading lab. He included them free with the, uh, when, when you purchase the hand reading lab. So I got them from that, all of them from, you know, five all the way to the 30% range that we've been working with. Um, and then so we're going to just do some updated ranges here, kind of put in hands that I think fit into that percentage a little bit better. At least from my experience and the games that I play, you know? So let's start, of course, with the 5% range. If somebody's calling just a really small 5% range, um, they're just a super tight player. They only want to play their, um, their best hand, the, the aces and kings for three bets and probably come with three bets with the ace, kings. Um, this is a super narrow range. I probably won't use this all that often against most players. Most players don't call this tight. But sometimes you do get the nitty players, the guys who their stats are like nine, four and like 10, six, you know, those kinds of guys, they do call this narrow. They just call with a chance to set mine, you know? So, uh, and they'll just be raising these hands here. So I'm good with keeping this as a calling range. I could take this out and add like a couple of these hands here and still be roughly 5% or so. I could do that, but I don't want to do that necessarily. I'll do that based on the opponent. So if a super tonight, uh, if a super nitty player decides to call me and, and I've seen him three bet with queens before, totally. I'll do that and then possibly add some, some of the better suited aces that he wouldn't necessarily want to three bet like ace, king suited, you know? So I would do something like that, but in general, I'm good with a 5% range being queens or, or worse. 8% here. Oh, so copy that. No change, right there, queens through deuces. Okay, so that's the 5% range. Go to the 8%. So somebody's calling 8%. I can definitely see queens are better and ace, king being the only, excuse me. I can definitely see queens are better and the ace, king being the only hands that they choose to three bet with. So they're going to call with all the other, all the other pairs, of course, as well as calling with the Broadway hands, just the strongest Broadway hands. So I'm still good right here with this 8% being range being so narrow. You're going to see this kind of calling range from a lot of your tags and your, um, uh, nits becoming tags, you know, players that, excuse me, players that like, you could see their stats are like 12, eight and 13, nine, 13, eight, something like that, those stats. So I'm down with keeping the 8% range the same. Uh, it just, I don't want to take the time to snapshot these. I might do that later, but just keeping it like this is just fine, you know? Do, 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 what am I doing here? Flop zero. Okay, so 13%. Now this is where we can start to make some changes. Guys who call it 13%, this is roughly what I like to call with, especially against tight aggressive and a lot of the just good loose aggressive players. That Chuck Nat who's overly loose aggressive, I consider him a donk. Um, I would call with a much wider range just to see the flop against him, especially in position. But this is just a standard kind of tag-ish, tight aggressive calling range, especially when you're like in the cutoff, probably is, is a good range that this begins at right here. Uh, so let's take a look at it. From my own perspective, I don't see a lot of people calling with, I'm going to, I'm going to build it back up to 13%. I don't see a lot of people calling a five, four suited. Six, five is kind of like the lowest suited connector most of the time that you see. Five, four suit is belonging a little bit wider range. We'll probably put it in the 16 or the 22% range, right around there. Uh, but I'm good with, for, for myself, I'm good with keeping it out for now. Um, I like to add a couple of suited broadways to ranges like this. And then let's take, he's calling so much, I think that these players, when they start calling more, they do, uh, they do tend to occasionally, especially in position, three bet those pocket jacks. Um, it's, I always three bet pocket jacks. I don't, there's never a time when I don't, other than when the opener is a super nitty opener. Um, and I see a lot of players just calling the pocket jacks, but then I see a lot of the, the tight aggressives and loose aggressives at my stakes. Um, raising or three betting with pocket jacks. So against a fish, let's say I had a, a very passive player, but I wanted to say that he calls on a narrow range, like a tight passive player. I would add that back in to this range if I'm hand reading him. So we're going to go with this range right here for the 13%. So what we're going to do is right over here, overwrite. And then so now this range is saved, 174 combos, 13.1. If we put it back to 8% and then go back to 13%, 174, 13.1, this new range is now saved as my default range, uh, my default 13% range. There we go, right there. And then what you can always do, whoops, not like that. Control C to copy it. Um, and then let's just, you know, put on a 5% range there. If I open this up, so you see range import export. If I import this range right here, hit okay, bam, the range repopulates. So, uh, this is a good way, I mean, I might not even, on this sheet, I might not even go into, you know, add these pictures here. I like the picture, just makes it colorful, you know, these are my notes. I want it to be something nice to look at as opposed to all words, all text. Um, but I might just keep these the way it is, skip the texts and, or skip the pictures and just put the text in, you know? So let's see if we want any adjustments to 16% here. So 16%, I think it, it is quite a bit wider. Uh, now we have him, this is the default one from Split Suit. Now we have them three betting the pocket jacks. I'm good with that right there. I like that. I like keeping, now having all the broadways within their continuance range. So, uh, they've got the ace, king, ace, queen offsuit as three betting, but they have the rest of these as calling, which I'm good with right there. The 16%, let's take that out and let's go ahead and add in. I mean, if I'm, if I'm adding suited aces, I'd rather go like that. Jack nine suited, I mean, I'm fine with taking that out right there. Six, five, let's keep six, five, six, five suited in, but I like adding the suited aces. I mean, somebody who's going to come in with as low as ace, nine suited. They'll often come in with all of these, but you've got to limit it somewhere to keep the percentage roughly low, you know? Um, I don't want to say they're three betting pocket tens just yet. The next range for sure. What is it? 20, um, on 16? Yeah, 22%, uh, the next one for sure. So we could just bump it up. It's 16.7, it's still really close to the 16. It puts a lot of the suited aces that players love to call with on the button and the cutoff. Um, and in the blinds as well, you know, they want to hit that miracle flush and miracle flush draw on the flop and then, and then get it on the turn or hit it on the turn. So I'm going to say, this is for me, this is a pretty good Flopzilla range at 17%. I'm happy with it, 16.7%. So let's do two things here. Let's overwrite this puppy. And then let's, I'm just right clicking here. Let's edit the name to, I'm a rounder. I like to round up and round down. So let's edit it to 17% right there. So hit range, control C. 17%, alright. See, the great thing about this with Flopzilla, it makes it so easy to adjust ranges. I'm not set, I'm not stuck with any given range that I ever save or that I ever, that I ever use in Flopzilla. Um, you know, I could come across an opponent who I know does not like to call these. Always likes to three bet this, but will call these and I've seen them call king, nine suited and even ace, queen offsuit before. Bam, I'm still at 17%, but I've just really quickly adjusted their range based on the history I have with the player. And that's the kind of thing that you need to do every time you assign a range. You don't just assign a blanket range and say, hey, it's 17%, that's it. Um, take a little bit more time, think about it and, um, and, you know, enter it accurately. Oh, let me show you something right here. So we're talking about call two bet, right? Um, what you can do to help you with this, let's just open up this table. Find a guy with some decent number of hands, uh, 145, maybe. Uh, oh, wrong button. Uh, yeah. Interesting. I need somebody with more hands. 145 just isn't enough to read them. Let's take a look at some tables here. 700, okay, great, 700. Oh, Sonic D, this guy is a reg, always playing. Um, and, uh, I just, you know, I've encountered a lot of hands. This hand probably is from a long time ago because I have thousands of hands on Sonic D guaranteed. Uh, so let's see here, um, raise, oh no, uh, the call two bet stat. So the call two bet, we can see, doesn't like to call that often. For whatever reason, we've seen a lot of calls in the MP. But in my pop-up here, I have this stat broken down by position. So call two bet is 19 and then four and then five. Um, but this is, this seems really weird to me that they're calling only so infrequently here. Um, and the big blind calling 24%, so we can always assign a wider range there. So when you're assigning somebody's calling range, you don't want to just look at their call two bet stat. In general, it's 11%, but look at, in the small blind, only call 2%. This person is super strict when calling out of this, out of the blinds. My, whoops, my guess is when they call out of the blinds, it's literally right here, hmm, maybe eights or nines and then three bets are coming from the 10s or better, you know? But this is what they're calling out of the blinds, just these hands, just trying to set mine. Maybe even three betting some of those and then calling. Uh, this puts them way above, yeah, way above five, 2%. But maybe they're just calling suited aces and small pocket pairs in the hopes of hitting something good and then they three bet with all this other stuff. Possibly, you know, so you got to think about that kind of stuff, but what helps is, what helps is seeing their call two bet percentage broken down by position. Let's see if we can find somebody who has a little bit, uh, okay, 11 and 12%, 23%, 4% out of the small blind. This is a little bit more what I'd expect to see. Of course, no calling in the early position. If you're a six max player, you can only open in the early position or fold. Um, uh, because you can't call a T bet because nobody makes a two bet before you. But MP is where you can start calling in six max tables. And so no calls so far, but calling in the cutoff and button, about the same, about the same percentage there. So at that 12, 11 and 12%, we are looking at roughly here, we could probably take some of these out. Maybe take that out right there. Yeah, right around 11 or 12%. This is the range that that person is calling with. Um, so you can see it's a lot of broadways, a lot of pocket pairs and some suited connector, pretty kind of cards here that they're calling. Alrighty, so we just did the 17, right? Yeah, 17. So 22%, we're getting wider now. Um, at 22%, uh, I think it, I think in general, uh, with people calling this wide, we can probably limit it to still pocket jacks or better being the three bet hands. I'm good with that. Depending on the player, if I've seen them raise or if I've seen them three bet with 10s before, I'll remove that. If I've seen them three bet with the nines before, I'll remove that, just depending on the situation, you know? But let's keep them in for now at least. 22% calling range, these are hands that people just in general don't like, don't, they can call with especially the much wider, um, the wider callers. I'm going to, uh, put some of those back in at 26%, but at 22%, I'm still good with keeping those out. Six, five and seven, five are where suited connectors really, in most people's eyes, this is where things start to get worth calling. Um, so we're at the 22%, I removed some hands right now. I'm good with the Jack ten, I'm good with ace, nine off calling, every suited ace, of course. Let's add in some suited kings to build it back up to roughly 22%. Um, you've seen, you see queen eight gets called a lot, of course. Um, Jack eight gets called too. There we go. I'm good with this being my 22% range. Took out some of the weaker ones, added some of the little bit stronger ones. Ones that people, when they just, when, if you give them two cards and say, hey, which one are you going to call with? The queen eight suited or the six, four suited? You're going to say queen eight suited most of the time. So let's add that to the range, um, and then take those ones out. So 22%. Overwrite, great. Let's just do a quick thing here. Queen eight suited hits the flop 31% of the time. Six, four suited hits 25% of the time, yeah, super big difference. I would much rather play the queen eight suited any day than the six, four suited. So, um, uh, and I think most people probably feel the same, even the fish probably feel the same. Um, they're going to be much more prone to fold these hands as opposed to that one. So I'm going to keep that in the range right there. So my new 22. Cool, it gets covered, but so what? I could just easily highlight it and, uh, change it. 26%? Okay, so at 26% right here, what do we got? Uh, we have three betting at nut, pocket nines or better. I'm good with now keeping, keeping the nines in, but making the 10s, right? Because we made 10s a calling hand, yep, 10s were a calling hand. So now let's make nines the calling, hmm, uh, the top of the calling range on pairs, I guess you could say. The 10s, the, 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 the worst three betting hand is what we can put in here. Let's go and take these puppies out. Um, and then so I think somebody is going to be adding a lot more of these suited hands. Kings all the way down through the five as opposed to somebody's offsuit hands. I can definitely see eight, nine still calling here for sure. So I'm good keeping that in. Ace, seven, let's remove that. Um, see, if somebody is calling so wide though, they're calling with every ace, right? Uh, no, let's put that in the 30% range. Let's say the 26% range calls with just, um, those mediocre, um, offsuit aces and they're raising all or three betting all those best ones. We can actually add ace, jack off, huh? Love that name. Uh, we can add ace, jack off to the, to the, to the three betting, uh, to the calling range here as opposed to three betting. People will much prefer ace, jack suited as opposed to ace, jack off. Um, I've seen ace, jack suited plenty of times three bet from opponents. I do so myself. Uh, let's see here, we're down to king, five, uh, queen, seven, na, na, na. Let's look at that 22% range. Yeah, there's nothing that we haven't. Yep, good. I'm down with that. Eight, nine offsuit, I can see an eight, nine offsuit calling. Um, if given a choice, I would much rather call these three hands than that one, but let's look at our, our, and actually, I, I much prefer that right there. Most of your fish are going to call, if they're going to call down to king, five, they're going to call all the way down to king, deuce suited. They could possibly call this as well, but then we're building this range up too much. I want to keep it at roughly 26% or so. So let's take that one, whoops, take that one out. Um, I'm pretty comfortable with this range right here, suited queens, uh, queen eight or better, jack eight or better. Six, four, uh, I can see that calling. I can actually, I'm fine with removing that just to get down closer to 26% as opposed, as opposed to 26, five. So let's remove that one right there, um, but it will go into the next range at 30%. So I'm good with this. 100%, yeah, I'm down. Overwrite. And then as you're going through and doing this kind of stuff on your own, you don't have to follow mine, you know, pay attention to the, to, or not pay attention. Think about the players that you often see making calls, uh, whether it's button calls, cutoff calls, whatever position in the blinds. Think about what they call with and think about what hands you see. If you see at your stakes, if you constantly see every single queen getting called, um, and then every single, uh, gapper and connector down to deuce, three and four deuce, then put those in your own calling range for sure. I just don't see it that often. I wish I did. It would be great because, uh, those are much weaker players, let me tell you. So I'm good right here at this 26.2%. Did I save it? Yeah, good, I did. So my range has changed. Cool beans, now 30%. I might even add, actually, yeah, we'll add, we'll add a 50% range to account for guys like Chuck Nat. 30% here, let's definitely put every ace. So if somebody is calling super wide, they're going to be calling a ton of these or every single offsuit ace, the ones that they're not raising at least. We have nines in their three bet range again. Good, let's remove, actually, let's move, remove some of these. Uh, let's not put that in, let's keep it at seven, six suited. Um, ace right here, we had the other range, calling every single king, let's call these kings as well. Um, uh, I guess the nine, I'm not a big fan of those, you know, I'm actually fine with going here with it. The 26, we had every nine in, huh? Okay, let's keep them in then. I mean, we could bump this up from 30, it's only a 4% jump, we could go to 32% right here. Um, but I'm good with this range, not a big fan of that one. Four, three suited, I've seen plenty of the more passive, um, guys calling with four, three suited for sure. Kings right there, queen. Let's add some of those sevens in, they're not great, but I do see those get called. Okay, let's change this to 33%. Uh, edit name. 33% right there and then we will overwrite. Sweet. I'm good with this. Can I just double click it? Oh, no. Nope, uh, I'm not going to take the time to do that now to make it all pretty. So those are all my new ranges. Here were all the old ones, so I still have them. Uh, and I can, I can easily revert back at any time or see what Split Suit recommended and make changes based on what he thinks, uh, or what Uh, and I ca- I can easily revert back at any time or see what Split Suit recommended and make changes based on what he thinks, uh, or what he thought back when he created us and all. Yeah, but I'm really good with these ranges, so we've got newly updated ranges now, let's build this puppy up to 50%. Suited tens. That's still, it's 51%, getting right there. I'm good with this range, so this range incorporates just about every suited card. Um, all those other cards, you know, you can see up there on the top left, the stronger cards are getting three bet, of course. Um, so this makes total sense to me as a 50% calling range, I'm good with it, 100% here, um, yeah, so... I mean, it's crazy, even Chuck Nat, you know, I saw him call with the deuce-four offsuit, which is like a bottom, bottom 2%, bottom 1% hand right there actually. Um, so he's able to open in the call. Hey Charlie, nice to have ya. Qoo, good to have you Charlie, um, yeah, good, so Charlie's here with us. So, let's see here, um, yeah, so this is what I would say is a pretty decent 50% calling range. It's a 50.5, I mean, I could build it up, let's just add something, 9-5 suited, you know, 9 to 5. Uh, yep, Dolly Parton's, is that what they were called, 9 to 5? Uh, 51% range, yeah, so we'll hit store range right here, 51% arena. And then there it is, so 33%. Now, uh, if I ever encounter Chuck Nat again or I get into a hand-ranging, uh, situation with Chuck Nat, bam, this is the range I'm gonna use, he's three betting his nines or better. Which actually, we could probably put for a guy like Chuck Nat, I would probably put those back in, um, and then give him the three bet with the jacks or better, until I see some more three betting, or I, I get some more three betting history with him. But, uh, you know, just depends on the player. Um, all of these, of course, like I said before, they're not set in stone, you adjust the ranges that you assign to your, uh, to your opponent based on the type of player that they are, nice and simple. So there is my 51% range, uh, oh, let's go ahead and add this. Sweet. Right there, um, anything beyond that, if they're calling beyond 51%, um, you know, you could just quickly and easily add every suited hand, and then maybe all the... Gappers, and you could just say that they call with something like that, which is a really absurdly high range. If you ever find a player who calls this wide, you've got to play every hand that you can with them. Um, preferably in position, preferably with a much tighter range, let's take a look at something real quick. Okay, so I hope all of you watching have Flopzilla by now, it's, it's an incredible software, you've seen all the uses that I put it through, it's great. Um, when you have Flopzilla, you also get access to this free program, come Hold'em EQ. When I first got Flopzilla, I thought, oh, range versus hand, that's great, all the flop stuff, great, but how do I check range versus range? And eventually I found out they have this companion program, um, that is, uh, Hold EQ comes free, or you can download it for free and use it. And what this does is it, it connects multiple Flopzilla, so you can actually have 10 Flopzilla, uh, Flopzilla pages or tables open, um, and you can input different ranges on them. And they can all, you can see how each range interacts with the board, so you can even do a ton of testing at one time, like for example, you know, a 5, a 5% did it all of these ranges, you can put them all on here, pit them against each other on a given board and see which one comes out the best, you know? If you wanted to do something like that. So real quick, let's say, um, range number one, we're gonna connect it to this board here, so bam, whatever range I change this to, 5% is now right there, 50%, bam, right there. So let's open up this other, or bring up this other window, let's connect this one to right here, there we go, so now they're connected. Now, let's say our two bet range. Let's say we are a pretty nitty player and we're two betting, we're, we're making a, uh, let's say it's a, a middle position open at 15%. So at 15% opening range right here, you can see all these cards, it's much stronger, much more narrow than, uh, than this donk's calling range right here. But what does that mean for equities? Well, obviously, such a narrow range, we're way ahead of his range at 62% of the time versus the 38% his, of his equity. Now let's see on just a random flop. Flop comes, oh, chicken board, king-king four. So on a king-king four board, we are still way ahead at 62, it automatically, yeah, it automatically calculates, so we're way ahead at 63% equity, still really high, that's great, cuz we have plenty of kings in their range. They do have a lot more kings than we have in our range, but at the same time, they have all these other cards that flop squaddush on this board right here. Let's try another random board. Let's not do another chicken board, uh, okay, cool, one middle, two down. On this board, um, you can see his equity is a bit, a little bit higher than that 32% on the other board, he's at 40% now. We're still way ahead because we have plenty of pairs that currently beat him, he has a lot of whiffed stuff, but on this board, he has plenty of draws, you know? Open ender, whoops, we're looking at a combo count, let's look at percentages right now, so open-end straight draws at 3%, gut shots at 9%. Um, let's change this to this. He has flush draws at 8% of the time. Us, in our range, we have flush draws only 7%, open-enders at, uh, at just 2% of the time, and so he has 2.6%. He has a lot more, uh, potential with his range of making a better hand than us. Um, uh, but right now, as it stands right now on the flop, we have the better hand, so you can see why it's so important to have a... Um, a very, a very, a, a much smaller range than your opponent's range on the flop, and Hold'em EQ shows you this. Now, let's say this is our opening range, what range should this guy call us with? Well, your calling range, and I, I, I talked about it yesterday, the gap theory states that a calling range should always be, I'm sorry, the hands that you should, you call with are necessarily, they should be stronger than the hands that you open with, with, that's the gap theory right here. So, we're opening 15%, he should be calling much less, not even 13%, he should be calling like at 8%. Yo, let's clear this flop here, yeah, good, so, um, if he just calls at this range right here, at the, uh, 8% calling range, he has 49, it's a 50-50 here. We have all those pocket aces, pocket kings and queens, he doesn't have those in his range, but at the same time, because he does have such strong cards in his range, he is, basically, we're coin flipping right now. What if he had an even shorter, uh, a more narrow range at just 5%? At 5%, oh, I wonder what that is? Bam, he's actually a favorite now, 52% favorite versus us at 48. So the more narrow your range, the better your equity is. Now, of course, that's not to say that, you know, you should always just call with a more narrow range, there's also post-flop to contend with, there's the flop to turn the river, there's action, there's the positions, there's the player type you're up against, there's whatever street they're honest on, there's so many other factors, you can't just call based on range versus range. I, I'm sorry, you can, you shouldn't, you should take more things into account. Look at the position, look at the fact that if I call right now on the button versus his early position opening range, I've got these other two guys in the blinds who are possibly going to come in, do I wanna go four-way to this flop? Um, do I wanna face, uh, uh, a squeeze from the small blind who loves to squeeze when I'm on the button right here? So those are all the other considerations. Sure, just hot and cold, your equity with a more narrow range is gonna beat your wider range opponent's opening, that's just in general, but there's so many other factors you've gotta think about. And the good thing is though, Chuck Nat and other players like him, who call here or call here, they don't think about that at all, they just look at their cards, oh, this is pretty, I like king-four suited, and they play it, which is good, those are the players you wanna get involved with. Alrighty everybody, so thank you very much for joining me, oh, let me tell you something else. Uh, so for tomorrow, tomorrow's study session, it's the final study session for the opponent two bet calling ranges week, this, this whole week was that right there. We're gonna start with hand reading, we're gonna get into another video by Split Suit, building a fish's pre-flop calling range, which should be really interesting. And then I'll talk about flashcards for these, oh, that was on the same sheet. Flashcards, making flashcards for these new sheets, uh, for these new ranges right here, as well as making a cheat sheet. And the cheat sheet is gonna look like this, you put all of your pictures, you know, on a piece of paper, print it up, um, you know, you can laminate it if you want, print it up and laminate it so that you all always have it handy while you're playing at your tables, you know? There's nothing to say you can't do that, you can do it live too, if you have Evernote in front of ya, um, you know? Before you make your play, you know, co- uh, occasionally scan and think, okay, if this bu- big blind calls me, he's probably calling with this range, if, if the small blind calls me, he calls me with this range. Put your phone down, you know, put your chips out there and see what happens, you can use cheat sheets live as well, you see, it'd be a little bit smarter, secretive about it, that kind of a thing. Yep, yep, um, and then... After that, I'll do a quick 30-minute study session where I put it all together, and in that studyment session, I'll show you a mind map, so, um, I talk about it in the book. But at the end of your weeks of, at the end of any week of study, you wanna try to consolidate all that you've learned into a one-sheet kind of thing that you can easily reference at any time. So a few ways to do that is you make a mind map, um, you can make a cheat sheet like I said with those ranges, you can make a one-page, so all the notes that you've taken so far, you can see down in the corner, I've taken 3100 words worth of notes. And it's been, um, what is it, 13 pages worth of notes right here. What you wanna do is go through it, condense all of it into one sheet, so it's a quick and easy reference for your future, uh, just for future reference, for future studies and stuff. Um, let's see here, da-da-da-da, and I'll also have a five-question quiz that I make for myself, quizzes are really good to just, um, to just, I kinda test your knowledge, but just quizzes in general, back in school, quizzes are really helpful for the teacher to know what you know to make sure that you're paying attention. If you know that you're gonna have to create a quiz, let alone just answer a quiz at the end of whatever you're studying, you're gonna just naturally try to remember it more. So making a quiz just kind of, um, it helps to reinforce the things that you learned in your mind. And at the end of these two sessions, I'm gonna do a one-e-mail following all of this, recapping all the study for the entire week, I'll include my mind map, include my cheat sheet, include my one-page notes, uh, and I will include my five-question quiz all in that email as well. So tomorrow, there's gonna be a lot of stuff coming at ya, um, so look forward to that, um... And yeah, I think that's it, alrighty, well, thank you very much everybody for joining, let me end this stream, go get the kids breakfast ready, and I'll see you later.